All right, I'd like to go ahead and call to order this regular city council meeting for Monday, August 26, 2024, 7:00 PM. All rise with pledged allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Lanyon.
President.
Pratt.
Here.
Jenkins.
Here.
Van Olsberg.
Here.
Ryan.
Gilroy.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Take motion to excuse councilman Ryan.
Thank you, do I have support? Thank you, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now I'm looking for approval of this evening's agenda unless there are changes that need to be made.
So.
Thank you so much, do I have support? Thank you, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm a little nervous. There's seven uniformed officers and there's seven council members, I'm wondering if you're trying to plan a coup or what's going on, but Chief, please come forward, I believe you've got a presentation you'd like to make this evening.
I do. Ryan and Marcus, please.
At the Williamson Police Department, we have an awards board. The awards board is made up of our chaplain, who is Dave Coleman, who is also a reserve officer to my right, Vinny Green, who is our executive administrative assistant, and myself. We meet whenever there's a nomination for an award, and there was a nomination for Officer Kooch and Reserve Officer Madrano for an award. I'll read the citation as it reads on the unit citation. Chaplain Coleman will present the award to Ryan Kooch and Marcus Madrano. On June 17, 2024, at approximately 7:29 PM, Officer Kooch and Reserve Officer Madrano responded to the 2,000 block of East Granite Avenue for the report of a five-year-old male drowning victim. They arrived unseen within two minutes. Upon arrival, Officer Kooch took over administering CPR on the unresponsive victim. Officer Madrano readied the AED. NISA staff arrived unseen after a few minutes. Officer Madrano took the child to the way NISA ambulance. Officer Kooch assisted with further life-saving efforts while Officer Madrano gathered information from family members. NISA transported the child to Sparrow Hospital. Unfortunately, the child did not regain consciousness. Officer Kooch and Officer Madrano exhibited exceptional calm and professionalism while at the scene. This unit citation is awarded to Officer Ryan Kooch and Officer Madrano for their direct action and exceptional efforts during this incident. Thank you.
So the term first responder is used kind of as an umbrella term for fire, police, and EMS. The benefit a lot of times that the police officer have is that they're already in a vehicle, so it takes us a little time to get in our ambulance and respond, or a fire truck in some cases. And they also have life-saving equipment in the patrol cars where they can start doing things previous to us getting there. And over the years, you know, I've dealt with a lot of people, a lot of officers in different capacities over the years, but it always seems like the officers here in Williamson are always, they don't even hesitate, they just instantaneously do what they can do. We met after this incident, and as Chief Weiss said, unfortunately, the young man didn't make it, but everybody that I talked to, we sat down and talked about it together, said that if he had had any chance in the world, you know, it was just everything just clicked. We refer to things like that as muscle memory. It was CPR, we train on it, at a minimum every two years, but generally every year. And both of these gentlemen, from everything, any of my employees said was just, you know, they got there, you know, they ran to the ambulance with the young man, and everything, you know, that could happen, that could go right at that call did, but unfortunately, they weren't able to help them out, so. I have challenge coins here, and the history of the challenge coin, they were started in the military many, 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 many years ago. And the idea is, is if somebody does exemplary service, they're given a challenge coin. And the idea is for you to keep it in your pocket. So after work, off-duty, of course, if you're sitting at the bar at a table with having drinks, then somebody can pull out their challenge coin and they tap it on the table. And when they do that, it's a challenge, and if everybody produces a challenge coin, then the guy that made the challenge has to buy around. If somebody doesn't have a challenge coin, then they have to buy around. And for each person that doesn't have a challenge coin, they have to buy around. So I want to give these NISA challenge coins and say thank you guys very much. I appreciate that. And if it wasn't for you guys, you know, if you guys help us out in our job immensely, we really appreciate that.
So stand fast still. This is a perfect opportunity. I'm sure you have family members out here, correct?
Yes.
Are there family members out here? If you'd like to come forward and take photos right now, because I will totally give you that option to do that, absolutely. Thank you so much for your service, Chief Weiss, Chief Hanson, thank you so much for bringing these opportunities. All right, well, on our agenda next, we have audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation. Is there anybody that would like to come forward at this time? Yes, please do, thank you. State your name, address, or service organization that you are with.
Thank you. Good.
Admiral Wolf and John Bowman from Williamson Rotary. We want to give a shameless plug for the Red Cedar River Days coming up in about, what, 10 days now?
It's on September 8, from noon until 4 o'clock at McCormick Park. Two years ago, I think it was, Rotary, the Williamson Rotary took on the challenge of spearheading the Red Cedar River Water Trail to develop a new and kayak trail from Williamson to the confluence of the Red Cedar in downtown Lansing. And we've made great progress on that, and sometime we'll come back and update you where that is, but coming out of that effort, we thought that what Williamson should do is we should celebrate that Williamson is the gateway to the water trail, we should celebrate that Williamson is a river community, that history of Williamson is in so many ways tied to the Red Cedar River. And for too long, it hasn't been a part of what we've celebrated. So we put together an event to celebrate it. We'll have, just as we did last year, we'll have paddle events to paddle from McCormick Park upstream to Deets Road and back, from the new launch site downstream to Harris Nature Center, we're working with Meridian Township on that. This year, we're gonna, we're gonna try to capture an iconic photo of Williamson and put a bunch of boats in the water and take a picture from the Button Street Bridge. We would like to invite all of you to come out, if you need a boat, we'll find a boat for you and get your picture as part of this new iconic photo for Williamson. We have a lot of other activities, food, music, art, Earl can feed us.
And you got a little flyer there that says, "Win a kayak." So you go to all these activities, which are artists, information centers, all about the river, MSU, goes on and on and on, and for everyone you go to, you get a stamp or a punch, and that increases your chances in the pot of winning the kayak. And there'll be other items as well. One of the artisans is there, is, oh, one of them's right here, is Tim Lippert, but anyway, this was made from a log jam log.
Wow.
And. So much of what we've had to do, trying to build this water trail, is the river has been clogged with log jams, right? So we put people in the river, trying to clear log jams out with the city team, double Williamstown Township and Meridian Township, and we've got this grant, so the future is bright, but in the meantime, we put volunteers out trying to clear up these log jams and create opportunities to paddle. And that was created out of one of those salvaged log jams that we cleared out.
That's awesome.
So there'll be lots of things, you mentioned the flotilla, that'll be at 1:00. There's a rumor that there's some people in this council that have never been on the river, is that, don't you have to raise your hand? But this is your chance, because we'll provide you a kayak to get in the picture from the bridge. And that's gonna be weird, there'll be some drone footage and everything else going on. And you punch your card, there'll be lots of other auction items besides a kayak, items like this, that were made for the River Days. And so there's, it's just growing and growing and growing, and we had a meeting today and it keeps growing, so it'll be fun. That's noon to 4 on September 8, and come and represent your city and get you in the big mass picture. That'd be great, thank you.
And also Rotary just did some cleanup along the river.
Yeah, because we're having whitewater demonstrations, and we want people to see it.
Wonderful.
And now you can, so.
That is fantastic.
And hopefully, we might get determined down there in some fashion.
Yeah.
I'm glad that's not the kayak you expect me to use, Earl.
Yes, you have to pay extra money to see John Hanifin in the kayak.
If I'll, extra money, I'll get in the bowl.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
My first time in a kayak was this thing last year, and it was cool.
Well, there you go.
I'll be there again.
And we just got two kayaks, but unfortunately, we're not gonna be home, but I'm definitely gonna be putting them in and.
That's, give them to somebody else then.
Right? Thank you, gentlemen, so much, appreciate it. Anyone else for audience participation at this time that would like to come forward? All right, moving along, we've got our council meeting minutes of August 12, 2024, my shortest meeting ever, nine minutes. Who would like to approve the meeting minutes for that meeting?
Kudos to the mayor for the efficiency, yes.
Who would like to support?
Second.
Thank you so much. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
A notable day.
Brandon, you had an opportunity to review accounts payable.
I did. We don't have anything that's out of the ordinary here, we have some large grant tax payments that we send out to the schools, to the Lansing community, et cetera, same thing we always do. But again, nothing out of the ordinary. So with that, I would make a motion to approve EFT 1049, tract 77744 through 77793, and ACH 1032 through 1059, for a grand total of $531,943.72.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions regarding our accounts payable? All right, I'm looking for support for the motion, please.
Does that work?
Thank you both. Barb, will you call the roll?
Van Olsberg.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. That is our only, our, sorry, moving along to our action items, we have one action item for this evening. It is the city tree nursery support. I'm gonna turn this over to our city manager, John Hanifin. We have a memo in our packet.
Thank you, Mayor Gilroy, members of council. Really, the language for this came from council member Van Olsberg, and I'll let him speak in a second if you choose us, but we've talked about this before, we did have a volunteer effort with Jack Smith and then our honor of Wolf to really kind of start the effort. We did plant a couple of trees out there at the well field, and those will do fine out there, but as we move through time and start doing more construction projects and catching up on some of our infrastructure, I think this is a great idea. It's a very low-impact and low-cost way, especially since we plan on resubmitting for grants through DTE, through consumers, they have rolling grant calls every year to plant new trees, so don't need to overcomplicate it anymore than that. Council member Van Olsberg wants to add a few words, but.
Yeah, I'll just say that the, actually, Jack Smith wrote this, I plagiarized it. So I will say that projects tend to have champions in these programs that get done, and Jack Smith is a champion tree guy, is everyone else, is planting trees, I'm his own, and I can't tell you how much I support this. I'm an absolute lover of trees. In fact, recently, I've noticed that the sycamores they planted where I was young in Grand Rapids have gotten big, and it is amazing. Why they chose sycamores, I have no clue, but they're there and they're huge, and yeah, very cool, so it's definitely a gift of the future.
Right, absolutely.
All right, so with that, this, I'm gonna read the.
Quick question before you do? Sure. Jack, if I want to sponsor a tree, how much would it cost and who would I do that with?
Well, Jack Smith, 202 East Riverside. I've, my wife and I purchased a tree for the park, and I believe it was $500. So this operation is, we've only been focusing on how can we get a supply started that the city would plant in street medians, because that's the area that we need to mostly increase our coverage. But Terry, it's a, you know, it's a, be happy to think about a sidebar on how we can, how we can entertain donations from residents, we'll be doing outreach to residents to see who wants something in their street median, but, you know, in private property, mostly been staying away from that, but it's a great second category.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Terry, I'm gonna let Scott go ahead and read this, and then I'll open it up for some comments and discussion.
Recognize the importance of trees to health and well-being in the city of Williamson. The city council supports efforts by city staff and volunteers to plant and maintain trees to expand the city's tree canopy. It supports the initial work to establish a city nursery on the well property to drive down the cost of planting new trees. Council further endorsed efforts to secure external funding to support this work to augment city financial resources and to collaborate with residents to identify good sites to plant trees in city street medians.
Thank you, thank you so much, Scott, appreciate it. And this is a wonderful project, we've talked about this previous prior years, and I think the discussion at that time was, is that we would want to make sure that we brought in substantial diameter trees that would have a better chance of planting, sticking, staying, growing, before we moved them into those designated areas. And it can be our right-ofways, it could also be our city parks, wherever there might be a need for a replacement tree. Back when I first started on council, and Barb, you may remember this, but we've had several trees that were put in McCormick Park for memorial opportunities, and so our residents do have the ability to donate to the city in that capacity and designate what they would like their money to go to. So I'm assuming we would go ahead and put together some type of nursery list of trees that would have best chances for survival, and then make that available for people if they wanted to donate for a maple tree, or an oak tree, or a pine, or whatever, we'd have the information.
You nailed it.
All right, awesome, great. So any other comments or questions before I call for the motion?
Just out of curiosity, because I don't know, where is the well property that you're talking about?
Lynn Road.
Okay, that's awesome.
Lynn Road, where we pile up all of our mulch and leaves and everything.
There's a lot of property here.
It's, it's actually very nice if you drive back there, it's kind of very park-esque, you know, we call it a well field, but it's very nice property.
Yeah.
So it's a perfect use for it.
So for Westwood, three years ago, I planted two maple trees in my front yard, and I went to the, it's down there at Bunker Hill, there's a nursery in there.
G Farms.
Yeah, and I think I walked them for less than $100 each, they were like seven feet or something, six or seven feet tall, so it doesn't seem like, it's not gonna break the bank, I don't think a tree that size, it's not gonna cost $500 because it's not huge, so that's a reasonable number to be able to support this, the tree nursery thing.
Absolutely.
So for Westwood.
Great, well, who would like to make the motion?
I'd move to establish a city tree nursery, to be secure external funding, grants, or donations, and collaborate with residents to identify suitable sites for planting trees in city street extensions.
Thank you so much, do I have support?
Support.
All right, thank you. Barb, will you call the roll?
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Van Olsberg.
Yes.
Jack, thank you so much for spearheading this and having that, you know, dedication to the trees in Williamson. Appreciate it.
And we'll be submitting to the grant program we submitted last year with a lot more knowledge of what they're looking for, we've had conversations with the program managers, so I'm hopeful. But it's great and very essential to have council support for the grant.
John, would we need to have any special equipment, or would we, obviously not a tree space, because these trees aren't, you know, big enough for something like that, but would, based on what trees that we plant out there, would we just do rental?
Typically, you have future, so.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, we would contract that out, I mean, they'll have the best chance to survive using a tree space.
Yep.
And that's not a horribly expensive thing, it's not free, it's a couple hundred bucks.
Yep.
And it's like anything else, if you get enough of them, if you get eight to 10, then you get an economy of scale, you get a better price.
Great, all right.
Yeah, but the initial planning, we can, we can hand it to the.
Okay.
Shuttle.
All right, excellent, thank you so much. That is our only action item for this evening. We're gonna move on to discussion items, and the first is construction project updates. I'm gonna turn this right over to our city manager, John Hanifin, we also have our Phil from Spicer here to be able to speak and answer questions, and so I'll turn this right over.
Thank you, we started our punch list and making our way through it, on Lloyd, we, there's some sections of concrete that we had to re-pour, we did that, there's some trouble spots on Williams that we talked about, and around the catch basins, and the subcontractor was out there last week, and they were able to make some progress in some of them, but we still have some work to do out there, I can let Phil speak to that in a second. And then on North Putnam, it's really been more landscape issues. What's complicated that, in particular on that street, is the underground, the surf net that's been booming its way through town. Surf net is still, we still have a bond, holding a performance bond for them, so they were put out notice by me last week that, you know, they're not getting any more permits, and their permits are gonna get canceled if they don't start making some progress, so hopefully we'll see some movement on that. We have two iron horses, that they have hired a landscaper to do some maintenance on the street, or the lawn extensions, mainly it's just been mowing. It's not really a good time to be planting grass, it's gonna be 90 and something for the next couple days, but just want to, again, keep confirming with residents that, I know it's frustrating, and it seems like it's never gonna get improved, but we're not, we're not gonna leave dirt on the lawn extensions, we're not gonna do that. That's about all I have for construction updates, Phil, do you want anything to add at this point, or?
No, I think you hit on them, I mean, the grass thing, we're just gonna keep after it, the plan right now is weekly mowings. We didn't feed as the conditions allow, and the landscaper thinks it's appropriate. There is grass growing, not a lot of it, it's just been covered by the weeds, so if we, if we just keep after it, we're gonna, it'll take us a while, we'll be into fall before we get good growth, and they'll apply the weed and feed as they can to get rid of the crap grass.
So I had the opportunity to walk Williams with John, Phil, and.
Right.
Right, right. And I appreciated the conversation, I appreciated the plan, and I know our residents are frustrated. I mean, I'm a resident, we're all residents here, I know we have frustrated residents, I get weekly pictures and snapshots of the right-of-way grass, so I appreciate the efforts that are being made for that, I know it's been a tough season with the heat. Phil, can you speak to the Williams Street asphalt repairs? Because I walked it, it looks like cold patch was put down in little tiny spots.
It's not cold patch, it's, they heated it up, they brought in a different sub to do this, that had some experience in it, so he looked at it, their initial thought was they were gonna use a UV thing, which is a big box, that they heated up and re-roll it. After the guy from the asphalt company got out there and looked at it, he said, "I think that'll do more damage than good." He said, "I'm gonna heat it up, I'm gonna put down new asphalt where I can, it's, it's a fine mix, but it is asphalt mix," and then roll that in as they can, and some of the patches turned out pretty good, others not so much, they might need a little more.
Yeah.
And a little more work, so that's another one where, you know, we'll keep after it to keep them get it, get it done.
Yep.
Structurally, the road is fine.
Right.
It's not gonna hurt anything structurally, it'll serve out its life, no problem, it's just a cosmetic thing.
Right.
For the most part, so, you know, we'll, we'll have them come back out, there's, I would say about half of them I looked at on Williams were okay, and the other half were eh, and then there was a few that they just totally missed on like the far west end, so they're gonna have to come back, I think what I'll do is some, either this week or next, walk it, probably put down some very small paint marks on the ones that they need to redo, so they know, I don't wanna make big orange paint everywhere. So we're gonna go out and do that here shortly to have that done as well.
Well, and I'm glad that you mentioned structurally, I mean, my concern in not being a professional or anything like that was, when we, when we do something like that, is there a potential for when we're snow plowing, if we, that the snowplow is gonna catch, that blade's gonna catch those, we're gonna have problems in the spring, any of that's gonna get pulled up, I'm just, that's my concern.
Right.
Putnam looks amazing, Lloyd Street looks amazing, but we know what happened with Williams Street, it was very, very hot weather, it did not cure the way it should have, and so we've got some, some pretty big, you know, areas that look rough.
There's a couple on Lloyd, there is a couple on Lloyd that they have to deal with.
Okay.
Most of them are on Williams, like you said, so structurally, they'll be fine, they won't, you know, it won't affect the plow, the plow won't even notice it.
Okay.
So it's just, it's a thing where it's like, we want it to look better, some of that that they did out there, it stands out right now because it's new.
Right.
Once it fades a little bit in the sun, it'll match a little better, and like I say, the other ones, there's still a couple rough ones that, yeah, I'd like to see them get rid of and smoothed down, there's a manhole, they still need to grind the concrete down because somebody drove through it.
Right.
And they just need to grind that down so it's smooth and the plow won't hit it, but the plows generally move, so they're not gonna, these aren't big enough to really snag and do a lot, a lot of damage.
Well, I just want to say thank you to John and to you, Phil, because you stayed on top of it, we've had, you know, whenever I get contact, I don't know about the rest of my, you know, council members, but I, if you're not happy, contact City Hall. So I know that we feel that, we have fielded a lot of resident concerns, but the fact that we're actually, you know, holding everybody accountable, withholding funds until it's done correctly, we waited a very long time to get this money to be able to do infrastructure, and residents, residents don't see the underground work that was done, they can appreciate the better water quality, but, you know, as long as we keep working at it to get it to where we are acceptable of it, then, you know, I appreciate your work, and John, thank you.
Two things, we haven't accepted any of the projects yet as of now.
Right.
You can call City Hall if you're happy to.
Yes, exactly, exactly, please call City Hall if you're happy.
Please City Hall, leave it though. A comment about the water quality.
Yes.
I live about a half a block off of Lloyd, and I've been talking to people in the area, and all the people I've talked to have thought that there's an improvement in the water quality, maybe not, you know, Sis Boom Bar or anything like that, but they all, nobody says, "Oh, it was, it's worse now," everybody says, "It's a little bit better, smells better, and looks better."
Excellent, yep. Yep, I would have to say that, too. I feel like it's not as strong a water pressure, but, you know, I'm happy with, you know, having the new water mains and some of the sewer lines and stuff taken care of, so I appreciate that. Any questions or comments for John on the construction project updates?
Just for clarification for the publics, so we talked about trees, when we, what's our plan for if some of these trees don't live? Because I, the neighbor right next to me has a tree that looks like it's probably not making it, but obviously, we don't wanna pull it up where we know for sure, so what's our plan on that?
Yeah, that's a great point, so we do have, obviously, the trees, the species list that we planted on, and knowing that if they don't make it through this, this, in the summer, the best time, the very best time to plant trees is in the kind of the heart of fall, like in the September, first part of October, so that's when we would replant. And, you know, there's some, there's, there's a couple that we thought were gonna make it, that kind of rallied a little bit, and there's some other ones that, that they're clearly not gonna make it, but we're gonna wait till the fall to replace them.
So I'll piggyback on that, are there any trees that are going to be planted, Williams and Lloyd?
I don't.
Any replacements?
There are some, we did have some folks request, we had, well, they removed it as part of the construction.
Right.
Folks the option, they didn't want them.
Okay, perfect, just wanted to check on that. All right, moving along, master plan update, John.
So we have a regular planning mission next week, and we have a full agenda, we've got a couple of public hearings, but we will have a work session on the master plan. The survey is, the participation is great, I'm not gonna talk in terms of numbers, because I don't want to skew the results, but the folks have been contributing to that, so that's great, and keep that up, and that'll stay open for another month or so. So that is the update for the. And that, that'll stay open for another month or so. So that is the update for the master plan. We're gonna focus next week on the areas that's really south Lynn, Solly and North Lynn at Nolly. And talk about design and, you know, the, the current zoning there and what we can do to make some improvements. And again, this, it's a long process. It's not like we're gonna talk about that area and then not talk about it ever again to the final document. But it'll, it'll, as, as you recall, we did have an issue with quorum last, um, early for the August meeting. So we weren't able to, to have our work session.
And, uh, what is that date coming up for the next work session?
Uh, it's the day after Labor Day. So it's at the.
The third?
Third, I believe. And it is seven o'clock. I mean, some of our committees are meeting at six o'clock, but planning commission is still.
Alright, so planning commission Tuesday, September third, seven o'clock.
Correct.
For viewing public. Alright, great. Any questions, comments? Alright, next main for safety improvements.
Yeah, so we've been talking about this for a bit since we decided to move in a different direction from the road diet. And I think Phil's got some handouts for us this evening.
Great.
I, I gotta commit it. Make sure we have one for the clerks so we can.
If you like this, it's because I get it. If you don't like it, it's because my staff can't agree it.
It's a good one.
So what we have are, i- is an option that I just kinda put together some thoughts of how we might be able to accomplish. What the goal is, is to get a, a turn signal.
Mm-hmm.
And a turn phase downtown.
Mm-hmm.
Without using the, the D word that MDOT was using.
Yes.
For it. So really, this is, it's a similar concept, you know. I- in order to get a dedicated left turn phase, we really need a dedicated left turn lane. Um, with this concept, we can build this, it's just a block in each direction, north, south, east and west, really. Um, we can build this. We don't have to move any curbs. We don't have to lose any parking. Um, so we're really not changing any of the configuration. We're just restriping this. We are, um, the second page shows some of the, it's a little bit more of a blow up of some of the lane widths. So we could take South Putnam and North Putnam, for example, and we would be using eleven foot lanes. You know, twelve is like your typical on Grand River that you'd see. It's pretty wide. In a downtown setting, going to ten or even elevens is really not unheard of. It's pretty common. Because they're tight, they're low speed. You don't need a twelve foot lane to get around. And it does help calm traffic to some extent, which is again, what you want in a downtown. So we can, um, get there with, on Putnam, two eleven foot lanes for north and southbound and a ten foot turn lane there to allow people to, to pull into that lane and queue up to turn left on Grand River from either direction. And then we would use the same concept on Grand River, but there, they're actually fifteen foot lanes. Because we've got a lot of extra pavement width there. We could widen out the parking a little bit too. We've got some extra room, um, there. So we'd have three fifteen foot lanes, which it really helps with that skew because of the angle between the two. It gives cars more room when they're going around the corner than just a twelve foot lane does. Um, and then it helps with the trucks too. Now we've got a wider lane for trucks and we can get them all in there. We don't lose any parking on South Putnam at all. Uh, we could possibly, and again, I, I know they're not perfect, we could possibly add a little bit of parking on North Putnam. Because we have room to do it there. Probably be on the, that one would only be on the west side there somewhere. It's probably not a lot of spots. It's three or four, but it's three or four if we want to. We don't have to. Um, but you've got room in there, physical room between the curbs to do all this. It's the tightest on South Putnam, but I physically measured it. We, we can map out those lanes, no problem, and do that. So the other benefit here is now for pedestrians, they're only having to worry about crossing three lanes instead of four or some indeterminate number on Putnam where somebody's going straight, somebody's turning left, somebody's going right. It, it's a little more defined. Cars are where you will expect them to be as a pedestrian. We can stripe, or we could replace the crosswalks with a colored concrete or something like that. As, um, Mr. Hannafan mentioned, they don't allow you to really stamp it anymore. But we could still put a red color in there to make it stand out. And then the last page is a, is one of those flashing pedestrian signs that we could consider putting out there on Grand River mostly. That could be, I've done them where they're just standalone solar, push button activated all by themselves on mid-block crossings. You could tie them into any pad signals you have out there with push button, especially as they replace and upgrade that signal. They're gonna upgrade the pads. We could tie it into that. There's power right there, so we wouldn't have to solar power. If we didn't want to, we could tie into the power. So we would have options, but that would be another thing. If you've ever been in Brighton or some of those that, you know, others, Brighton's got them with their mid-block crossings. They're super bright. You absolutely know when there's a pedestrian coming, uh, there's no surprises. So you could do something like that. We'd have to play with placement and where they're visible best and where, you know, how, how we would do it, some details. But that is something you could consider down here to, again, draw a preten- attention to potential pedestrians crossing the road.
Um, go ahead, Brandon.
So too, I love the pedestrian light thing because I go to Brighton often. Um, and that's the, the most, I mean, I've gotten almost hit in the day too. But the most times that me and my kids have almost gotten hit is not at nighttime, especially around those deep corners. And so having that flashing would then give people the awareness. And I think having the push button would make it so that it's not a constant thing.
Correct.
Because then people just get blindness to it.
Right.
Um, whereas if it's someone actually pushing it, they'll pay attention. My question is on the colored concrete, which I love the idea. How easy is that to maintain though? I mean, is that something that we'd be able to like redo? Because obviously it's a pigment and then not like a paint job.
Yeah, but it's, it's poured right in the concrete. So as the concrete, if it wears away, it's still got pigment all the way through. So you don't really have to do hardly anything to it, you know. If, it's, it's regular concrete. Over time, it will crack. It would, you'll have to replace it, but we're talking twenty years. You know, you're not talking every year. There's almost no maintenance whatsoever.
John, you have a follow-up for that?
I was just gonna say, in a last community I worked in, we did something similar at the crosswalks about ten years ago. And it's still the same. I mean, they're somewhere because it's on F-52, which is, you know, equivalent traffic lines that we have on, on, on Grand River M-43. But so there is, um, but it's not, it's not anymore. And it's, it's, it's more than paint, but it's not incredibly expensive once it's down.
Yeah, awesome.
Um, go ahead, Terry, and then I'll go to Tom.
More parking. No negative parking. That's great. That's absolutely fantastic. Um, how much is this gonna cost and when can we start?
Well, there's about, you know, I didn't do an estimate on the colored concrete. It's really just striping. And there's sixteen thousand feet of striping here, plus some transitions that I haven't worked out yet. You're talking ten grand, plus the signs, plus the, the concrete. So even if it was double at twenty to twenty-five, you're, you're accomplished. Yeah, it's all pavement striping. That's really all it is.
Mm-hmm.
Other than the concrete.
The following question to that is, why didn't we do this five years ago, ten years ago?
I wasn't here.
Tom?
Um, my question is, and don't get me wrong, I think pedestrian safety is the number one concern and priority here. But one of the issues we had when we were talking about the road diet, which is similar setup downtown, was semi-trucks or emergency vehicles not being able to make corners. And it looks like coming north into town on Putnam, that turn eastward on the Grand River is gonna be a tough one for a semi-trucker and emergency vehicle. Would you agree?
Y- yes, but not a whole lot different than it is today. It's pretty close. We'll put a turning template on it so they can see. You know, emergency vehicle, they'll be able to, to swing out because they'll have lights and they'll be able to move over.
I think semi-trucks are a big concern there. We're gonna be able to.
Correct, correct.
Maybe we have to put in a truck lane, take them up and around.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a very tough turning movement, no matter what.
Yeah, it's tough now with two lanes.
Correct. Um, so, you know, they'll, they'll have to swing out. You know, usually what a trucker will do in that kinda situation is he'll move in halfway into that turn lane and just block the left turn lane as he needs to to make the right turn. He'll sit and, you know, straddle the line and then make the turn. Um, he's turning into, instead of a twelve foot lane, he's turning into a fifteen foot lane. Plus, when we striped this out, there is, you know, where I've had the bike lane, that's just extra space between the curb and that. So actually, the intersection is probably like an eighteen or a nineteen foot lane that he's turning into versus what he's turning into now, which is twelve. Unless he goes into the other one, then he's turning into twenty-four.
It'll be similar though.
It'd be very, very similar.
So, um, Phil, my question would be, where approximately would the left-hand turn lane start? How far back on, you know, east, west on Grand River, north, south, middle, middle street, Putnam, you know?
Great question. Um, haven't worked out that detail entirely yet.
Okay, no, that's.
But kinda what I envision on, on the two Grand Rivers, um, it'll go down the first street here, right past the police station.
Cedar.
Yep. The easiest way to accomplish this is you got four, four, two lanes coming in westbound.
Right.
One of them will be a right turn only at the intersection and then we'll strike the other two, um, to pick up. And then as you go out of town, it'll be one lane that branches into two just past the intersection. So we, you know, like a lane ad. Lane ads are super easy to do. Nobody ever really notices them. Um, so that's how we do it on those two.
Okay.
Um, north and south, it, it doesn't lend itself to that as much because it's only two lanes each way. So we would probably just have a transition zone where we stripe it. Either before or after, um, the two intersections there. I'm leaning toward before those two just because it gives us more stacking distance. And I haven't done official traffic counts, but I've been out here enough and watching on Putnam. And there's times when there's eight, ten cars there waiting to turn either left or straight. Um, so the more stacking we could have on that, the better it is. The more it helps trucks, the more it helps everything.
Right.
So I would tend to probably start it there, but, but we also have to look at some measurements to make sure I got enough, we got enough room and.
Right.
And it works. But that was the first guess.
Alright, and then would this also be conducive to having no turn on red signage then?
If you want to.
Okay.
There's a lot of. There'll be left turn only kind of signage. Will we hang it over Grand River or something or just paint it on, on the pavement?
You'd probably have a left turn arrow.
On the pavement.
On, on the pavement. And then you have a signal that had the left turn light, just like you'd always see. So you'd have the two signals there with a dedicated left turn light, more than likely.
I had the impression talking to MDOT that they're the only ones that can make a signal there.
Well, that was kinda that up in the air.
That was, that was kinda the up in the air. The whole traffic study, if we put the road diet in, that our lights were not going to be replaced until twenty twenty-six. And that's where we came back and said, we're not gonna move forward with this road diet the way they presented it.
Yeah.
So I.
But the door light, no matter what, was still.
Yes.
Up in the air.
Right, yeah.
Might happen, might not.
Because they were gonna have to do traffic studies again, so.
So your ten to twelve, twenty K, does that include new, new lights?
That's not the signal, no.
That's not the signal.
That's just the striping.
Yep.
And, and all of that to make that work.
And John?
Can we do just striping and leave the lights the way they are?
It seems. Possibly.
Possibly.
Probably or possibly. It's more optimistic. So a couple of things, I mean, twenty twenty-six is sixteen months from now.
Right.
So, um, that's one of the things that's different. And that's when we, we've been told the new signals coming. We, we wanted to run this by all of you first and get your impressions before we would go and even do the next step to talk to MDOT. Because if you all looked at it and, you know, thought the soup is rotten, we would, you know, throw it out and make new soup. So, um, I think the impressions at this point are favorable for us discussing with MDOT. And, you know, being cautious of the, you know, the, I guess, the, the important, um, you know, the issues of, of the past. And, you know, parking and queuing and making sure that, you know, we're not making exacerbating the problem.
Right.
But, you know, folks tend to forget, well, this is different. Well, you know, the traffic conditions aren't there right now. It's Mario Kart, like around the light.
Right.
It's one of the things that we're trying to change.
Right. And with any type of project, um, you know, we would, obviously, it would be the re, it would be the education of our community. We would have signage out there that, you know, new signage ahead, new striping. We would make sure that, you know, as we've done over the past ten years, communicate to our community what our plans are, what we're doing. I think we've heard enough feedback for the community, from the community that safety is their number one concern. We all know that. We see the Facebook posts. We, we talk to our neighbors, um, you know, in the grocery store. Or you get texted, you know, on your cell phone, can I talk to you about the four corners? So I think this is positive movement forward. I really like the idea of the pedestrian signs, um, you know. And if we are smart enough fiscally, we'll be able to figure out how to do this, which, you know, we're pretty good at that. We, we've done a very good job. So I like this idea moving forward. And the one thing I would have a question for Chief Yance. Do you guys have the ability to control the lights if you are going through? Do you have that, like some communities do?
We do in Lansing, but not.
But we don't have it down here?
Because we don't have the equipment on our signals.
And would that be a part of a light upgrade then, I'm assuming?
Could definitely be because we do have the equipment on our apparatus.
Okay, alright, excellent. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, because we talked about these left-hand turns. And is that gonna be difficult? And so you just answered a big question for me that you would have the ability to do that and change those lights.
And I don't think the education would be excessively difficult.
No.
I mean, we just did, I mean, we have a massive, massive traffic pattern by the elementary school and we made a big change at Chief's suggestion.
Exactly.
And it was just education for six months and they all figured it out and now people aren't turning left anymore.
Exactly.
I think that, I mean, I have faith in our community that.
Me too.
With education, that they'll be perfectly fine learning this new traffic pattern.
Yeah. Steve?
Are there, it sounds like this may be a elongated process involving DOT as is required. Of the things that you've mentioned, you have part of this specifically, the, the sign flashing for the, um, for the pedestrians. Are those things that we could do without regard of having a left-hand turn lane? Just as a quick example, the restriping that we did and put elsewhere, I think made a tremendous impact.
Yes.
If we could do something like that.
Like in stages?
Well, that part of it more current than waiting for a part of.
Like the striping thing right away.
Yeah, if we could, if we could do something like that. I think that's gonna, that raises the consciousness of individuals. We just see that white stripe there. And that generally, I think, if we see white striping, we generally think, oh, I better start looking around now. We don't have any of that right now up front. It's just all, nothing there to designate where you're walking.
So any of the new striping would be within MDOT's right of way? So we would need their permission to do that. Um, I don't know why they would withhold that other than.
I wouldn't think they would care too much.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's just, it's, it's doubling down on what's there. Making it's better. We're not, we're not significantly changing it. But it would have to go through their, their, uh, machine first, like is the best way to say it. So, so we can certainly propose that, like, as, as possibly phasing the project. We could do that, you know, it's, it's, we, we turned like contractors to do it.
Right. And then would we have to have permission for the new pedestrian signage from MDOT? Because it's their cross, okay. So like I just said, we could phase this. We could put together a proposal. Phase one, striping. Phase two, signage, lights.
I don't think I'm sharing any significant trade secrets that if we're paying, permission is easier to get.
Right, right, exactly.
It's when you're, you know, asking MDOT to pay for something. It's always that fine line between, you know, it's, it's, it's our city, their road. And, you know, our residents, so, and shouldn't differentiate from that. And we, you know, we have a responsibility and obligation to do what we can. So we can certainly share this now that the council's seen it. We don't, we don't need a formal action or anything like that.
Right.
We can, Phil and I can engage with the, with MDOT folks and see what we can get moving up.
I would love that. I think the rest of councils love it. I think our community would love it. So, I mean, in essence, then, Phil, you would come back with a, a next version of this with a little bit more detail. Where are you gonna start those transition lanes, all that type of good stuff in preparation for going to MDOT?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Scott?
Yeah, I wanted to check on the traffic flow with the comparison from the three links to the four. Do you perceive traffic flow proficiency to be better or worse?
I know people don't agree, but the traffic engineers and the bean counters of the engineering world, they deal with data. And all the data that you'll ever see shows three lanes or five lanes moves it better than four. Especially when you have turning movements because, um, like this one out here, I mean, I, it's sketchy. When you wanna go left and you're behind another car and there's another car maybe going left and there's another car behind him that's whipping out. You know, it's a little nerve wracking. So it's, it is safer. It gives people a safe haven to turn and it does move traffic better.
Yeah, I mean, even if it was a little slower, doesn't mean we shouldn't do it.
Right.
It's primarily for safety, but I was just curious.
Yeah, it, studies have shown that. I, I have real, real world examples. So one of the first projects I did was in Dexter. They had four lanes downtown. They wanted to do a streetscape. They cut it to three. I heard the saying gloom and doom. You know, everybody's, nobody's, everybody's gridlocked. Yeah, that was twenty-six years ago. It's still there. It's still functioning. They get through, they're. They get through, their, their fire department is right there on the edge of downtown where we cut it from four lanes to three. I'd never heard any issues.
Excellent, excellent. Great dialogue, thank you so much. Thank you, Phil.
This is a really good play.
Yep, thank you so much.
Can I get a copy of that?
Sure.
Alright, moving along on our agenda, correspondence received, information only, we did not receive any. I'm going to move into department head reports. I'll start with our city manager, John Haddad.
Briefly, it's a busy month, Planning Commission, Council, Council two, DDA, Tiffen Park, we'll all meet this, this next month. There won't be a ZDA meeting because no one needs a, any relief from any zoning issues, so it'll be a busy month.
Alright, great, thanks. Chief, Vice.
Yes, thank you. I was, I was involved in an incident last council meeting, so I wasn't able to report back on National Night Out, but.
Yes.
It was amazing, it was great. The wind and rain kind of put a damper on some of the bounce houses, but we sold, didn't sell, we gave away about 800 hot dogs, so I think we had about 400 or 500 people there. And I did hear back from agencies that happened to be at other National Night Outs, and they said ours was the best, so. Ours is the only one that had Sparty, so.
Right.
There's that. So next year, it's, we plan to up the ante a little bit next year and make it a little bit even bigger.
Great.
But thank you for all that participation.
Alright, thank you, appreciate it, Chief. Chief Yance, you're here.
Yes.
Welcome, great to see you.
Thank you. I want to echo what Chief Vice said about National Night Out. We also now have a mascot, Sparky, so we have a couple individuals that are manning the Sparky mascot, and we, it's, it's going over real well with the kids, so Sparky meant Sparty.
Yep. That's perfect. Well, thanks so much. I mean, I was down there, I'm not sure if other council members were able to get down there, but it was nice to see it back to its former glory. So many kids out there, so many different people that had tents up, just doing really great things for our community, for our kids. Having that community interaction with our first responders and, and everybody that was there, service organizations, it's what, it's what Williamson's about, you know, being able to do that. 800 hot dogs, that's a lot. I mean, I don't know what your goal is for next year, but you better, you know.
Double it.
Double it. You better double it. But thank you so much. Yes, Terry?
As a lifelong suburbanite or urbanite, moving to a small town in my 60s, looking around tonight, this is two things. This is how policing is done in a small town. These guys with the award, and then this report on, on, on the National Night Out and all that. That's, it's just amazing. I, I don't, maybe this seems like normal, normal, normal to all of you, but to me, that seems like, wow, this is different. And it's good, for what it's worth.
John?
Was it just to ask Chief to talk about our, our staffing? To talk about our.
Yes, staffing's going well. Recruit Matthew Peets is set to graduate from the Washtenaw Community College Police Academy September 6th, so let's come up very quickly, he's doing great, he's passed everything with flying colors, so I have no doubt he'll make it through the academy, and he starts in patrol right after graduation. So that will put someone else. And then Reserve Officer Madrona, which you met this evening, that received a unit citation award for his efforts, is attending the Mid-Michigan Police Academy at LCC starting in January.
Nice.
And I have no doubt Marcus will do a great job, and then we'll be the full staff.
Excellent.
Expect the graduation date on that?
Um, yeah, these usually.
Mid-Michigan is usually the first part of June.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a pretty extensive one. How's back-to-school going?
Back-to-school's going great. I've been up to elementary school, the first day was a little dicey, a little gamey, but it, it's going great. Like Councilmember Lannigan said, the no left turn's phenomenal this year, new class of, parents had to get used to it, but clearly goes with them.
That's alright. And crossing guards, how many do you have right now?
We're up to full strength in crossing guards.
Excellent.
And, but, we're always looking for more.
Excellent.
So if anyone wants to apply, we're, we're happy to take your application.
Great, thanks, Chief. Good to hear.
You're welcome.
Good to hear.
Could I add a quick?
Yeah, absolutely, please, Chief.
We did receive our, our new boat, which we did have out at National Night Out, and I'm going to talk to the Red Cedar group to see if maybe they'd like us to have the boat in the water for the.
Well, I was just going to ask if you were going to be a part of the River Days Motella. I think that'd be a perfect opportunity to show it off.
The other thing I wanted to add is we, for the first time in the history of NISA, we ran our own fire academy this year. So we had 10 people attending, five of which are our own people, and they did their state practical yesterday, they all passed their state practical, so they do have their written test on Wednesday night.
Alright.
But it was very successful, and we're excited to get some more people.
Well, I think extend our best wishes to them for the written exam. Alright, that's great to hear, thanks so much, Chief, and thanks for being here tonight. Moving right along, we've got committee, subcommittee reports, any council members need to report out on meetings, yes, NISA, town?
Ours was actually two and a half weeks ago, and I apologize, I missed the last city council meeting, so it was first chance I've had to report out on it. But the biggest takeaway or biggest discussion item from the NISA meeting was Stryker was there with a presentation. Stryker's a company that provides EMS equipment, like stretchers, heart monitors, what are the automated CPR units called?
Lucas.
Lucas.
Stair chairs.
Stair chairs, so.
Okay.
Some of NISA's equipment is relatively new, some of it's relatively old, some of it's still under warranty, some of it's not, some of it can have service contracts attached, some of it gets repaired out of pocket. Stryker's came up with a program where they can trade in, at fair trade-in value, all the current equipment to replace with updated and in many cases, better equipment at more of like a flat rate. It's like a, was that a seven-year deal?
Yeah.
So it's like a seven-year deal, they can do a payment plan, basically get all the equipment under a contract, service contract, and it sounds like the whole project will fit into the current budget without having to make any extensions or takeaways from anyone else, so.
That's great.
Sounds like a win. That was the big discussion takeaway from NISA.
Alright, great, thanks for that update, appreciate it. Other members? No? Alright. Audience participation, we have another opportunity, if anybody would like to come forward at this time.
I would like that young gentleman in the back to introduce himself, if we would.